Good afternoon, and I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Tanjapalani Council to order. And the first item is A1, the regular afternoon council meeting agenda. Now, before I ask for motion to accept, there are three delegations which have withdrawn, and that's E2, Mr. Seitz, E3, Ms. DeRoche, E4, Mr. Fisher, one addition, E5, Mr. Colin Frye. So with that, Colin has addition, is an addition, and there's withdrawals, E2, E3, E4 are withdrawn, with an addition of E5, Mr. Frye. So with that, I would call for motion, Counselor Long, second by Counselor Davis, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Now, ask for motion to doubt the minutes of the regular afternoon council meeting of July the 9th.
So moved.
Counselor Fox, seconded, Counselor Arnison, any errors or missions? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Are there any on-table items? Okay, I mean, on-table, I'll get to that, okay. So, a motion to resolve in special close for the items on the agenda, and I would ask that council allow consideration of amending the agenda once we're into close to allow for others who will be visiting or guests to join the meeting and accommodate their schedules. So with that, I'll ask for a motion. Counselor Qualley, seconded by Counselor Arnison, and Counselor, do you want to push your button, Counselor Fox, you have something to add?
I have a property.
Counselor Fox.
Property.
Okay. Okay, with that, I'll ask a question, all those in favor, opposed and carried, so now resolve in special close, thank you. In the regular meeting of the Tanjapalani Council, and the next item on the agenda is presentations, and we have Ms. Barb Sharp, Chair of the Community Input Group Task Force, and she'll present on the findings of the task force. Welcome here.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Thank you. And, which one do I hit to start it here? This one? Kind of an odd, oh, there we go. Yeah, thank you. Okay. I just use these down arrows, right? Well, good afternoon, good evening, your worship and council. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and make a presentation on behalf of the task force that you're all quite familiar with and intimate with probably most of the details of those meetings, but it's nice to come forward in the public arena and just show the work that's been done on this. So, I'll begin by saying that we, as you know yourselves, but I'm not doing it just for you, of course, the task force was agreed to by council as an emotion on March 19th of this year. It kind of followed from, of course, the public engagement, the mayor's Standing Committee on Public Engagement, to keep that flow of what I call the input and feedback loop ongoing, so that the input was heard from the public, the feedback, and that's kind of how we got into the task force, because the citizens of Langley came together with a whole bunch of groups in the community, the Brookswood, the Fort Langley, all the different various members, and it seemed like a super good idea to bring them all together with some of the business community and others to, you know, talk about important issues. And so, the council did that and established the task force, I think it was 26 members on the task force, including members of council. And we also had a facilitator to help us, Mr. Gordon McIntosh, and what he did was he set out pre-meeting information to all of us to get, you know, to start really get our brains engaging and thinking about what we wanted to talk about at the three meetings that were established at the end of April, May and June of this year. Huh, these something. And what we came to at our first meeting was a vision statement that had been put together by Gord to get us going, to thinking about the things that we were going to talk about, in forms of mostly what I call small breakout groups, and council and various members of the committee sat together and went over what were like the key vision checklist, the economy, the environmental, the infrastructure, the social, and of course, you know, the governance and stuff. So, we had these small breakout groups, and you can see a lot of activity going on here, papers everywhere, and thank goodness for staff members that were there to help record some of the details and take it away, and Doreen made a wonderful job of pulling everything together at the end, between her and Gord, they did a fabulous job of that. And each time before our next meeting, we had all of the details from the previous meetings that we had put together. So, the three months of work, everybody worked really hard to bring all those issues together. And I do want to emphasize here, there were many, many more priorities than just the few that finally came to council, the list is endless, the list is to limit sometimes, but we agreed upon the vision statements, and you can see human aesthetics, natural area, business retention, growth, community image, tourism, arts, culture, healthy lifestyles, I mean, there wasn't any stone left unturned with this group of community people. So, we used the factors such as success indicators, expectations, what's working well, what needs attention, so, you know, whether we have good greenways and what we can do to improve them. We, as an example, for the economy itself, which is job creation, business retention, community image, tourism, et cetera, we had 33 in total success indicators, I've only listed just a few there, things like we have a thriving film industry, we have local jobs, we anticipate and prepare for future needs like alternative energy, and we also used what works well, the horse industry, community special events, airport, and then we had areas of attention, and this is just the economy, it's not all the other factors that we looked at, live workspaces, attracting new business, filming in the ALR, some of the areas for attention that we could use. So, you can see a few more smiling faces after we got a little bit further along into our process, because people got to be more comfortable with each other and got to work a lot harder, we got through some really tough discussions, because you can imagine people are not always of agreement. So, it's important to really realize that the task force dealt with a tremendous amount of issues, and I know council's intimately aware of those, and by no means does the group prioritizing limit or minimize any of the other issues that were brought forward that are in the final report. So, all the issues are listed for any member of the community to see how detailed this group was, so that you can see yourself that there wasn't anything, any stone unturned. We simply ran out of time to address more issues and finalize, and get, you know, sort of mine down on some of those issues. So, if you look at April, the intensity, and then you look at June, you can see that it's a little more relaxed, because we've gotten to really work so hard together and be able to get a lot done, we did get a lot done in those three months, so. Key to the task force recommendations, this is the beginning, not the end, okay? Mayor and council continue to actively participate in the input and feedback loops from the community, and the fact that the mayor and council members were present in both body and mind speaks volumes about the commitment that this mayor and council have towards their community, so we really appreciate that, and I want to say thank you from the task force. We'd like to once again say thank you, and keep going in this ongoing feedback loop between the members of the community and the mayor and council. Without the vision that this mayor and council have had, we, you'd be losing out, we'd be losing out on all the important things that this group of people brought forward for everybody to discuss, so. We also want to thank the facilitator, I did actually get a picture of him working hard there, Gord McIntosh, for keeping us on track, that's what he was really doing. My job was the easiest, I just opened the meeting, closed the meeting, you know, get to be friendly with everybody, so as the chair, but this is the real hardcore, the staff, and the members of the committee, and Gord working hard to pull all the issues together, so it's a complicated process, and we're looking forward to many more opportunities like this in the future, so, on behalf of all of us, I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and thanks for taking on the difficult job of keeping us all in line as chair.
Hardly.
That was tough, I know. So, I have some questions, comments from council, Counselor Richter.
Yeah, and thank you very much, Barb, for coming out and telling us all about this, it was a very, very interesting and interactive process, and I thought participation was outstanding, although I did appreciate the comment that you made with regards to the list of ideas, there were, there were like over 50 issue areas generated.
Well, like the successes, you could see 33 alone there, like each group had tremendous amounts of things attached to it.
I know, but the big thing is that the group as a whole, generated a list of 50-plus issues, and, but we were only able to get through 20-something.
Yeah, I know.
So, I guess the question I have for you is, the whole list of 50?
Yep.
Going to go to the next council, because they should be able to see?
I think they should.
The full range.
Absolutely, I, that's my understanding, is that all of it, you'll see what we worked on and finalized and got down to, mined down on some of the issues, and then there's the outstanding ones we didn't get time to deal with in the three meetings, and those should also be dealt with in the same way.
Basically, the groups were just told to go pick whichever one you want to work on.
At the beginning, yeah.
Yeah, there was no prioritization.
Yeah, not in that sense, so I think they're all, that's why I say there's equally, like all this host of issues there, and I'm sure, it certainly would be, and I'm sure most of the committee members would be happy if you wanted us to take another meeting or whatever at some point in the future, and do some reminding on some of those other issues, we'd be happy to do that, with, of course, your participation.
Thank you. Just to clarify, I think there was some prioritization in the first meeting, I know Counselor Richter wasn't able to make the first meeting, so.
Yeah, some of the, that's how we got to the list, we got to.
There was a prioritization by the groups on what was important to them.
I'm referring to the list of 50-odd items.
Yeah, the ones that came out.
There was no prioritization on that, yeah.
Yeah, we did prioritize.
And that was in the second meeting.
Yeah.
No, I was just saying, you weren't able to make every meeting, so. Counselor Fox.
No, I just wanted to say, as the mover of the original motion, thanks for your leadership, and I appreciate the leadership that you provided, you might, you kind of, you know, made it pretty simplistic, but you were, did take a strong leadership role, and I appreciate that, and thanks for all the work and effort you put into.
The committee did outstanding, and council, it's just, I, this is just, you guys are leaders in metro Vancouver, in my opinion, so I'm pretty proud of that.
Thank you. Counselor Arnison.
Yes, thank you very much, I just want to echo those comments, I was able to make two of the sessions, and what I found really interesting about it is that, as you were reflecting, that once a group kind of comes together and you get used to each other in a way, but then you also mix it up, because you have the topic areas and people moving around, it really is interesting to see ideas coalesce and come forward, and then the way that we put them together, I think it's going to be a very useful framework, so I'm really happy to have been able to participate, and I know that the incoming council will use that as a framework for all the priorities, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, and I don't see any further comments, I just want to say thank you, especially to the members of the community that took time out of their busy schedules to come out and spend time with us, and provide the valuable input, and I know there's some members of the committee that are here tonight, I don't know if they all stand and wave, and...
Yeah, stand and wave, everybody that's here.
Who's on the committee? Or just wave, they can't stand. I guess they've done enough, just by saying they're too tired.
It's hot, it's a hot day.
That's right, but we do appreciate it, really, I want to make sure that that's, I know council appreciates the fact that we can't do this alone, and we do need members of the community to come out and provide their input, so thank you.
Okay, good.
And Counselor Richter has one more thing.
Yeah, just one question, so the work that the committee's done, that's come to council, any of the new people that are running for council this fall, can they access that report just by contacting the mayor's office?
I would think it's public information, yeah.
Yeah, it's, the report's out, yeah.
So, all they have to do is just?
I think contact, the township, yeah.
So, they can have access?
I don't know, is it on the, is it on the website somewhere?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
I believe it's on the agenda from certain meetings, do we have it on the website? We had, did the report come to council? Yeah, okay, yeah, it'll be available, there's no problem, it's a public document.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, thanks, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next, we go to delegations, there, just for information for those that are here, three delegations have withdrawn, that's delegations in E2, Casper Seitz, E3, Patricia DeRoche, and E4, Jeff Fisher, one has been added, Mr. Colin Frye. So, we'll start with E1, Graham Farstad, come forward, and you do have five minutes to present, and you'll see a solid red light when your five minutes is up, so, on that little, welcome here. No, she, no, they'll help you over there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Do you need some assistance in getting your?
Oh, there you go.
There, yeah, we'll help you get up, yeah.
Come on, boy.
Thanks very much, your worship, members of council. My name is Graham Farstad, land use planner in principle with the Arlington Group, planning and architecture, speaking in support of the application for a soil deposit proposal at 23433, 44th Avenue, and I just have 10 slides to just cover the highlights of the application. The proposal is permanent disposition and placement of clean fill on a 2.3 hectare site, 5.68 acres. The, there's a picture of the site, the yellow area surrounds the site, the axis is off 44th, the proposal is basically to shape the slope and make the site more usable, the slight site rises up north of 44th and then drops down farther north, and previously there had been an equestrian use, there's a bit of a topographic break at the top, and the applicant simply wants to make the site more usable to bring back the equestrian use that was there previously. The site is quite large, and we propose to comply with all grading, setback, and environmental requirements of the soil removal and deposit bylaw. Site is not in the ALR, and it is quite a unique site in terms of some of its characteristics. One of the aspects that is unique to the site is that we're looking at clean fill from only one location, soil that was excavated for the Evergreen Skytrain Extension, that has been temporarily stockpiled in Porco Quillam on a site owned by the applicant, and the proposal is to confirm that that clean fill would be the only site that would be used. So, we have already had that certified by Aquiterra Consultants, and would like to simply find a permanent location for that. The applicant owns both the stockpiled and the disposal sites, and is not going to permit any soil from any other sites without the prior written approval of the township of Langley. All ESC requirements of the township will be met. The site actually has a very safe access from the Fraser Highway, there's a couple of possibilities, we could use 44th, but I think it's probably superior if we use an access only from the Fraser Highway, right turn inbound, as you see on the red arrow, and around the three green noted sites are owned by the applicant, so the site access would come to the east side, across 44th to the proposed disposition site. There would only be one property east of the applicant's property that, and in fact, that property has a 70 to 80 meter buffer, of tree buffers, so we can have a very ideal situation in terms of minimizing access impacts on any other property. In terms of traffic, the very low traffic movements, the very limited hours, the applicant typically would use one truck, but there would be a maximum of two trucks owned by the applicant that would access the site, which would work out to somewhere between four and eight loads per day. The source material would only come from the applicant, and the site would not be available for any other soil sources to ensure quality control. On-site management, this is a picture of the site, turned on its side, the access, as you can see, the hatched area would be, allow for full turning movements around, and disposal within the circle, and then it would be graded and moved to the site, you can see those lines, they show, they drop on a gentle grade towards the north. The, there would be two fences that would control the sediment as you move north, and so the disposal would be on the area that would be grading to the north. The next picture shows the area where the disposal would take place within that darker area, the typical grades would be somewhere between 4 minimum and 9 percent, average grade would be only 7 percent, so it's quite shallow, and there would be a minimum 5 to 1 grades along the edge, so we would not be impacting other properties. We had a consultation process which resulted in close to 70 percent, 67.3 percent to be exact, if you were to count the total number of people notified, there were 764, and only 6.5 percent of those notified indicated opposition, but if you look at just those that commented yes or no, it's over 2/3. The property's owned by Emrick and Bellwinder Bath, engineering design and ESC requirements in engineering, and will meet the environmental requirements as well. The property owners have had this property for 15 years, would only, the key factors, only certified clean fill from, fill from the single site owned by the applicant, safe transportation with low volumes, truck routes only would be used designated by the township, careful environmental controls to mitigate impact, and we think we will have a visual enhancement of the site, which will not impact on any adjacent property owners. If anything is remiss, we probably have not provided, you know, the level of detail to date, so we certainly want to be very transparent in our approach, and we're fully prepared to meet all requirements of the township, both on the engineering side and in terms of the environmental safeguards.
Okay.
So, if there's any questions that you might have, the applicants are here, and their engineering consultants are here, and as you say, we would, the request is simply to enable us to move forward, and we don't ask for any relaxation in standards, the only thing is, we can't meet that, we haven't met that 80 percent, but I don't think there's any jurisdiction in the province that has that high a standard.
Thank you, I do have some counselors that wish to speak to you, Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I thank you for letting us know it's clean fill, my question is, what type of soil, is it like a good quality soil that they could, I don't know, grow grapes in or hops or something if they wanted to?
It, well, it's excavated from the, in terms of the evergreen line, it would be to a large extent gravel material, and it would have some element of topsoil, in the end, we would be covering it over, and there would be, it would be hydro seeded, and there would be a swale at the edge to trap sediment, because one of the critical thing, I think, is we want to make sure that this is not going to increase turbidity off-site, the bylaw requirement is that the post-development flows would not exceed the pre-development flows, and we're looking at both on the engineering side and the environmental management side, that having those done to ensure that takes place.
Okay, and what about the drainage into the creek at the bottom of the property? Like, how are you going to make sure that nothing's draining into there that shouldn't be draining into there?
No, definitely, don't want, we certainly don't want to see that take place, the site would be a minimum, there would be no fill activity within 30 meters of the property line on the north side, and there's an additional distance to the creek, so we would be not impacting any of the riparian area at all, and we would certainly want to make sure that we do baseline documentation, so that we're, in fact, starting off with a clean area, and we do, definitely don't want to impact that in any negative way. The owners are longstanding property owners in the area, and they're just as much protective of the future as others.
Okay, and my last question, you had a map up there that showed the access coming off Fraser Highway, so it's really bypassing like the manufactured home park.
Yes.
So, there's really only a few houses, I know there was like 700 ballots mailed out, but it's probably only, what, eight houses?
There's a very large area of circulation, I'm not certain, it might be as large as, you know, a couple of kilometers, but the intent, you know, so it was a very large circulation, we're trying to minimize it so that we don't impact others, and that was one of the considerations, looking at access routes, that we not go through the trailer park, the problem with that is, part of that pavement is a narrow strip pavement, is narrow as five meters, and there is a little hill just to the west of that, so that would be a bit tricky going up and down, and so we think if we stay only on the applicant's land and just cross over 44th, that would minimize impacts on any adjacent properties.
So, you are definitely going to use that route?
That's the proposal, yes, unless, you know, the township staff, you know, had other views, but our proposal, our initiative is, we want to minimize that impact on any adjacent property owners, and make sure that we're coming in and out of the site off Fraser Highway only on truck routes.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Fox.
Yeah, thank you for coming, I actually visited the site yesterday, and took a first-hand look at it, and I appreciate the access and eagerness on this, particularly because 44th is pretty, pretty weak pavement, I don't know if it ever really was truly done to any standards spec. So, my question to you is, are you going to provide the personal oversight on this particular?
No.
No, who will be doing that, Mean Land?
The, 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 people that would be looking after that would be on the engineering side, Mean Land Engineering, and I've also contacted Enviro West, environmental consultants.
Okay, so, your job is just to do the pre-prep and?
Basically, looking at the land use, land use issues, and, but I wouldn't be involved in the environmental or the engineering side.
Yeah, and this is one of, if not the first, application of this kind in a process, and the 80 percent threshold is pretty substantial, there's no question, when we get to ALR lands, it's a different, definitely a different scenario, this not being ALR lands makes, you know, it's a bit of an interesting fact, but, you know, the 765, Counselor Richter alluded to the mobile home park right there, and so on and so forth, I think as long as you don't bother them, they're going to be happy, and only getting 6 percent return, and having to get 80 percent of 6 percent, it's a pretty weak return from the neighborhood on that, which I take to mean that they really don't have issue with it, so I'll be supporting it, because I think that it's, there's just, it's, there's not a lot of issues that came up in negative to it, so, good.
I have a question, so the, am I to assume that the topsoil will be scraped off, the clean fill will be put in, and then you said it would be, is it going to be brought back, so you have a layer of topsoil and then hydro seeded?
I think that's, I need to?
They're nodding their heads.
Get a clarification though, I think that was intended, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure it's clear, okay, great, thank you, no further questions, thanks. Okay, the next delegation, Mr. Colin Frye.
Thank you, worship, the counselors for having me here today, I'm here to speak on behalf of Ian and Doreen Newby, who have their properties at 3428 and 3474, 262nd Street. The matter before you is a non-farm use to the agricultural land commission, and the purpose of the non-farm use, it says, the properties are currently used by International Movie Services, run by Ian and Doreen Newby, and they use the property in part as a storage and staging area for militaria, military equipment and vehicles, IMS has been operating from the property for over 30 years, primarily from the property at 3428, 262 Street, and over that period of time, IMS has developed prominence in the film industry, and is a leader in providing military and public service uniforms, vehicles and equipment for the motion picture industry and for television. During that period of time, the success of IMS has allowed Ian and Doreen Newby to contribute greatly to the township of Langley through the donation of time, and their efforts and their equipment for a variety of events, too many to name at this point in time, but I understand that their participation had contributed greatly to the success of Alder Grove Fair this past weekend. Grove Fair this past weekend. That being said, we're supportive of the township's staff recommendation to forward this to the land commission, so that we can pursue our dialogue with the commission to bring the land use activity into conformity with the commission's wishes. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. I've got some questions from council. councillor Richter?
Yeah, two questions. So the property's been used for this for thirty years?
Yes.
Okay, so what prompted this to come forward now?
The only, the, what started the genesis of this was that the Newbies were paid a visit by a compliance and enforcement officer from the commission, and my experience that the commission has likely been, it was as a result of a complaint, and it's the only complaint that we have heard of. We're not familiar with any complaints registered to the township. The source of the complaint, we don't know, but it was a single complaint, and this dates back to June, July seventeen, and as a result of that, the direction was that the Newbies' activities were non-compliant with the Agricultural Land Commission Act, and to bring it into compliance, they had two options. One was to cease the activities on the property and, or to submit a non-farm use application, which we did in a timely fashion, and we got that in, and we kept the land commission apprised of that, of our progress, and then it got tied up a bit, and our wishes were that, at the time, you'll know, that the township was having dialogue with the commission with respect to the future of that property and others, under the Alder Grove Community Plan Amendment. And so we thought that that process should play out before we proceeded, because the outcome of that, depending on which way it went, was germane to the client's outcome. And then we also understand that that, after the commission's initial decision, there was dialogue continuing, and we further deferred that for the same reason. And once that most recent decision came out in April, I believe, it was clear that, at least at this point in time, we had to move forward with the application to seek the commission's concurrence that the activity could continue. And if it's, you know, it would be our hope that we can persuade the commission to say that this has been undertaken without fanfare, it's been very, very successful, it contributes greatly to the community, it would be a significant loss to the film industry, as it was mentioned earlier in the Community Input Task Force. I M S strongly is a member of that and contributes greatly to the success of the film industry, not only for the township, but for British Columbia and nationally and internationally.
Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Long?
Well, thank you, yes. So I know that the commission would probably hire some new staff, and they were looking on Google or something and up popped the farm, because I don't know, is anybody would complain, because that property is completely isolated from everybody else. However, however God here, here we are, and I was just curious to know how much of the property is being exempted. I know the report talks about the part that is going, that is existing there for so many years, but how much of the property is, and what happens with the rest of the property that is not being excluded, or asked, not excluded, excuse me, asking for a non-farm use?
Well, the two properties, one property is three point five hectares in size, and the other property is two point three hectares in size, and it's fractionally used, approximately half the property.
Less than half?
Less than half, you know.
So then the remainder is still in agricultural use?
Sorry?
It's still in agricultural use? I think there's animals grazing there.
There are animals, the Newbies have allowed certain animal owners, people to graze their animals on the property. It will also be, and we have discussed, moving forward, if, should it go to the commission, the commission will probably be interested in not only the land use, but the opportunities for the use of the residual lands, and I've already had a chat with the Newbies with respect to potentially forwarding a proposal to the commission of a benevolent lease or tenant arrangement for a farmer to use the rest of the land.
Thank you. councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you for coming today, and I'm interested in your explanation of potential mitigation, because the net benefit to farming is, I think, what you're just discussing. So is that something that will be part of the application going forward, or is that part of the negotiation strategy?
It's not?
After today?
Well, after today, dealing with the commission will be probably a significantly different exercise, given their response to the township's goals and objectives under the Community Plan Amendment. But nonetheless, we believe we can raise an issue. It is not our intent to try and, you know, greenwash the proposal, it is what it is. We're, and the activity, you're absolutely correct. I've been to the property many times, and you'd never even know it was there, unless you went into the back and looked at it. It's all neatly arranged, it's in buildings and marshalling yards, and it's all centralized, and, you know, in my estimation, no significant harm has come to the property. Should it be the Newbies' wish to not do it anymore, it's a matter of taking the stuff off, and there's buildings left. To the point on the farming, it's an anticipated question that the commission may have, we're not trying to mitigate it, we're not gonna try and offer them something as window dressing. We want to get the Newbies to be in a position to continue with their business, which, I won't sound like a broken record, but to serve the community and, as well as to provide employment and to keep the film industry vibrant. So we'll listen to anything. It is, as a result of compliance and enforcement action, albeit one complaint, that we have to respond to, we'll do that, and if, at the point in time, through discussions with the commission, they want the Newbies to give consideration to farm enhancements or buffering or whatever, we'll put our minds to that then.
Thank you. councillor Qualley?
Thanks, thanks for your presentation today. If the Newbies decided to sell the business or divest themselves of the business, would the land revert back to farm use? Is that something that is a covenant on the land or on the landowners?
Well, number one, the Newbies have no intent on discontinuing. If they're permitted to continue, they will like to carry on as a going concern. If, through the course of future decisions, they decided that they wanted to sell it as a going concern, fair ball. If they wanted to discontinue it, that's equally fair. It would be nothing more than relocating, in some cases, very substantial pieces of equipment and all the military from the property, and then what would remain is the land as it was, with buildings on it that could be used for agricultural purposes. You know, perhaps ten years down from the, down the road, the commission will come to a meeting of the minds with Langley, and Langley's objectives could be fulfilled down the road, then that'll be another option for the Newbies.
Right, we're talking about, like, tanks and armored vehicles and, like, there's some serious equipment there.
Yeah, there is.
Right, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you very much. All right, so move on to reports to council. F one is soil deposit application for property at two, three, four, which do you wish to move, councillor Fox? Are you moving, do you wanna look at the motion and tell us what you're moving?
Hmm?
Are you moving that?
To support, to process. Oh, sorry. The council directs staff to process the soil disposition application for property located at two, three, four, three, three forty-fourth Avenue.
There's a second, councillor Qualley seconds, discussion on F one. councillor Richter?
Yeah, I note in the report that this is the first time we've used this, and that basically, we sent out over seven hundred letters to people around there, but only twenty percent responded, and of the twenty percent, sixty-seven percent said yes. So I have a question about whether maybe the baseline is a little too high, given the response rate that we're getting, but I'm comfortable this is not going to negatively impact a lot of area neighbors. I think that it's isolated, and I appreciate the fact that some plans have been made to keep the trucks off Forty-Fourth and away from the manufactured home park.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question on F one. It carries unanimously. Move on to F two, electric vehicle charging requirements. Kind of a motion, please. councillor Whitmarsh, second by councillor Arneson, discussion, councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I just wanted to say through you, to staff, a note of appreciation for following up on this. We've had quite a few discussions around the council table regarding E V charging stations, and so I think it's going to be very interesting to consider in the future what number we come up with. I noticed that there's a range when we look across Metro in terms of what their regulatory policies are with respect to how many they expect, and so I do look forward to a subsequent staff report on the options, and I know that we will be looking to have them tailor-made and to be best suited for our community, so thank you.
So no further discussion, I'll call the question, F two. It carries unanimously. Move on to F three, Agricultural Land Commission Application Number one zero zero three three four, this is Newby, could I have a motion, please? councillor Fox, second. councillor Whitmarsh, discussion on F three. Seeing none, I'll call the question on F three. It carries with councillor Arneson opposed. Move on to F four, Agricultural Land Commission Application Number one zero zero three zero four, Alpen and Martin Consultants Limited, Homestar Building Corp., on seventy-two Ave. Could I have a motion, please? councillor Whitmarsh, second, councillor Long, discussion on F four. councillor Richter?
Yes, I, this is an unusual piece of property, and I can certainly understand how dividing it might help, or increase the area that is used for farming. But I'm just wondering, do we need to add something like a farming-only covenant? I thought on page forty-eight, I'm just looking this up now, that there was a reference to this from the, from Dave Melanchuck, which he recommended placing a farming-only covenant against the title. So I would like to make that amendment, if I could.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment? councillor Davis seconded it. Discussion on the amendment. councillor Long?
Worship, can I get an explanation perhaps from staff? I mean, it is in the agricultural land reserve, so.
It's in a rural plan.
Oh, well, if I could?
Sure, if you want to speak to that?
The impression I got from Mr Melanchuck's arguments was that by putting a farming-only covenant, you're probably going to avoid people building estate homes instead of using the land for what it was intended, which is farming?
Okay. councillor Long?
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm just wondering if staff can tell us if we have the authority to do that on.
Your worship, registration of a covenant would have to be with the consent of the owner, so council does have the authority to make that an additional notation for the land commission to consider as part of council's referral to them.
Thank you, councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I do appreciate the amendment, because my concern is, I know there is language in the report having to do with the fact that we can, as a local government, limit where the houses would be, et cetera, but I'm not necessarily sure that we have the authority to actually mandate that somebody use it for a farm. So I'm actually not gonna, I support the amendment, that if there is some kind of covenant that could be put on there, so as to restrict the usage for farm use, that would be helpful. But overall, I'm not supportive of this application. I think that when it was purchased, the person who bought it knew what the conditions were. I don't, I know there's arguments, they are saying that if you broke it down into smaller pieces, it would be more likely to be farm, but I'm more influenced by the A L C when they talk about keeping larger parcels together. And I understand that there is viability in smaller acreages, but I think there's also viability in larger ones. If you put your thinking cap on and your business model really meets what the status of the property is now, so I won't be supporting sending it forward, but I'm in support of the amendment.
Thank you. councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I would say that because this is in the A L C's jurisdiction to determine what happens from an agricultural point of view, I would suggest that we don't need to put in a limitation of farming only. I think that's up to the A L C to make that call.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I agree with councillor Whitmarsh, I don't think we can impose on them, it's in A L R, it's in our rural zone, and then, I don't know who's gonna enforce the fact that they're farming or not farming, and what is farming, leaving it fallow, I don't know, putting grazing, but I don't support it, I think it's in a rural area already. So with that, I'll call the question on the amendment. That's F four. Amendment fails with councillor Fox, councillor Whitmarsh, mayor of Rose, councillor Qualley, councillor Sparrow, councillor Long, opposed. So back to the main motion, any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Motion carries with councillor Richter, councillor Arneson, councillor Davis, opposed. Move on to proposed community amenity contributions policy, and could I have a motion, please? councillor Sparrow moves, second by councillor Qualley. Any discussion on this? councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Well, I really want to commend staff for putting this together. I know it's been a long-term discussion about community amenity charges. We've had a lot of dialogue with our development partners, with U D I, et cetera, and so we've culminated in having this proposal being put forward, but I do have some questions through your worship to staff, and so if I can be indulged, I think I'll just rhyme them off and see what kind of responses I can elicit. My first question is, I didn't see any instance, aside from kind of an escalating clause, that they could go up based on cost of living kind of increments in the future, but I'm wondering what opportunity is potentially built in to have us change the list of C A C recipients in the future, if that is something that's considered in the policy?
Mr Seffy?
Yes, your worship, the policy, as well as the staff report, actually do discuss and contemplate an annual review.
Okay.
That will then, not just a review, but also have a automatic increase based on the Vancouver Consumer Price Index built into it.
I did understand the part about the increase, but not necessarily the part that the actual recipients could be reviewed by a sitting council. We'd have the discretion to be able to do that on an annual basis. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So my secondary question is, actually, the list. So if you look at page six of the report, and you will see the identified preferred list, so the prioritizing of where we'd like to spend the money. So I had a couple of comments about that vis-à-vis the report. So in the report, it indicated that there was quite a bit of public feedback in the Willoughby area, particularly having to do with library services. However, there is no reference to libraries being included in the C A C. So I'm wondering, through your worship, to Mr Seffy, could they be considered in some way under the recreation heading for consideration? Would that be a possibility?
Your worship, that is exactly how staff anticipate this item, in fact, to include libraries as part of the overall scheme of what a recreation facility would consist of. So libraries are included.
Oh, that's good news, thank you. The other question that I had, through your worship, to Mr Seffy again, could you please clarify, because I did not see in that list fire halls as a priority, and so I'm wondering if that is something, for some reason, that I'm not aware of, because I know that they can be considered for C A C funding?
Your worship, I guess, in reverse order, yes, they can be considered because of the fact that they're not covered in terms of other tools that are available to local governments for raising funds. So it, they could, but the fact is that, as part of the initial analysis that was determined based on council direction to come up with a needs assessment, there was a comprehensive list that was prepared that was then presented. was a comprehensive list that was prepared, that was then presented to the industry as well as the public, which then resulted in input that then allowed staff to fine-tune it and tweak it. And the requirements for fire halls have not been determined to be as urgent of a need as some of the other needs that have been determined.
But further to my earlier question, we could make an amendment if it was determined at some point in the future that we wanted to change the prioritizing. I guess, kind of what I'm asking in a way is, we have a list of identified priorities. Can we expand those priorities?
Your worship, as mentioned earlier, the policy does require staff provide council with an update on an annual basis, at which point council can determine if the rates need to be adjusted and for what purpose. So, having said that, yes, other items could be added and council has the full discretion to either take items away or add items to the list.
Okay, thank you for that. And my final thought is, I see that there is an analysis and that 20% of the CACs are currently planned to be earmarked for affordable housing. I'm wondering about that in terms of staff's reference point to how it is or how long it would take for those funds to generate enough money and actually to create a predictable number of units within a defined timeframe. Is there some other references from across Metro that we could look to?
Your worship, if I understand the question correctly, it is virtually impossible for staff to determine, even based on what activity may be happening in other jurisdictions in the region, as to what affordable housing projects might come forward in the future, if that is a question. What staff has been able to do is determine what the likely revenue that might be generated as part of the CACs would be. And that is estimated currently to be about $5 million a year, 20% of which can go towards affordable housing projects that can come forward.
Okay. My primary concern with that is if I look at that as a funding opportunity, the degree to which we're being able to work towards having something actually constructed in a reasonable timeframe. Because we're all talking about affordable housing and how important it is. But if I, the cost of housing, construction, land costs, et cetera, they're going up daily. So, I am concerned that a percentage of these $5 million is not going to be satisfactory unless the township, for example, is setting aside some of its own properties in order to contribute to affordable housing. So, I do have some concerns about the 20%. It's not enough for me to not support this. But I do think that we need to take some more, an investigatory approach. We have the opportunity now to have a housing assessment done. And so, I think once we have a clearer idea of what the need is, perhaps we might want to reconsider that. And I'm not necessarily saying more of the 20%, that it needs to be 40 or 50%. But we have to find some way in order to get some real critical mass going forward. Because housing is something that is a key component of our community. And unless we're doing something a little more aggressive than what we've been doing before, I just don't see it actually being that successful for the need that we have currently.
Thank you, Councillor Sparrow.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. I appreciate staff's work on this and the research and input that they received during the process. I guess my question would be in regards to the actual policy of how it is listed, that the list, as Councillor Qualley, or Councillor, sorry, Councillor Arnison mentions, why we would sort of handcuff ourselves into actually specifically listing certain areas or amenities to fund. So, you know, township greenways, the satellite RCMP detachment, the Conference and Entertainment Centre, the Recreation Centre in Willoughby, Recreation Centre in Brookswood. I'm just, like, having done my own research when we sort of started this process, other communities, from my understanding, didn't specifically list certain projects. And I feel like, maybe, you know, even using those as examples of items, so there was some clarity on what type of projects we could be looking at funding. But to actually specifically earmark where you would need to go back and make a policy change in order to change the list seems not sort of maybe in keeping with what we would want to be able to be fluid in addressing certain things. Like, I do think there will be that need coming up with the development in Brookswood for the fire and the expansion and the fire halls. And to that have not that have, to have had that not listed, I think is a concern to me as well. So, I just feel like, was there a reason why we couldn't leave that open-ended and not actually specifically list certain projects and just leave it as examples?
Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, the, I guess, quick answer is transparency and accountability. I understand the idea, but this list does not, as I said earlier, preclude council through a resolution to direct staff to amend the policy and add things or remove things. I understand, again, Councillor Sparrow's comments in terms of maybe other jurisdictions not having a list, per se. But for us to actually start thinking about this, it was important for us to actually determine what the needs in the community are. And as I said earlier, a long list was prepared, which was then shortlisted based on community input. And in order for us to actually come up with a number, we had to actually have a list that we could then assign or estimate costs of, which would then be translated into a community amenity contribution policy. But then again, it does not prevent council or handcuff council in terms of potential changes in the future.
So, but we would then have to actually amend the policy then to be making those changes?
Your worship, yes, it would require an amendment to the policy, but it would be simply a resolution of council as opposed to an extensive bylaw process, which, again, would be a requirement if staff was to be directed to start setting money aside for any project. It would still be the same process, one resolution of council.
Okay, okay. Okay, I can see, I do appreciate, I think this is a starting point, and I think it is addressed and mentioned in the policy of us reviewing. And I think that's important, an important part. And I do feel like this is a starting point for us to kind of maybe assess and, or future councils to assess. So, I guess, sort of having said that, I can understand that. I just would hate for it to feel like it was procuring other items from being looked at with them not making the list. So, with that sort of being clear that that is sort of maybe a starting point of maybe the initial needs, and that the community and council, future councils can address that as moving forward. But I do think this is a great start. I think that it's clear from the comments that we're expecting, you know, an estimated $5 million a year to start with with this. I think it's clear that there has been money left on the table. And I'm excited now that we're going to start collecting that money and seeing some of these projects that in the past would not have been able to be funded this way, to be looking at ways to sort of generate some money to help with these costs of a growing community that are definitely more than just roads and, you know, infrastructure, pipes and all of that, that there are other aspects to a growing community that need to be funded. And this is certainly a starting point. So, I appreciate, again, the work of staff and I look forward to this being implemented.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Well, we used to have a perfect system before this came up a couple of years ago. And staff would negotiate on each case-by-case basis. There was all kinds of contributions being made. I don't know if there was any money left on the table. The only money that's not on the table anymore is the poor folks that have to buy the homes now that this is all, this whole policy's been created. And so, without being terribly critical, I was opposed to going down this road to begin with, because we did have amenity contributions on a case-by-case basis. And I think the township actually led the region in that respect, because we weren't constrained, just as that has been mentioned just recently here by Councillor Sparrow. Now, we have this policy by which we've boxed ourselves into, and I can't imagine the amount of work that's gone into it. And do we, who wins in the end? I guess, it's hard to say, but I know who's going to lose. The price of housing is not going to go down as a result of this policy. And I'm not trying to put council in a bad light, but really, we have to provide affordable housing through our citizens. That's the number-one goal of any local government. And a policy like this doesn't really accomplish that. But here we are, way down the road, so I can just not support it. But do thank the staff for all the work the councils put you through. And I hope at the end of the day, it, well, it'll be what it'll be, I guess.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Thanks for the, this policy. I think it's, there's some really good work that's gone into this. And, you know, I have some, I have some of the concerns about housing prices as well. But I do appreciate that a significant portion of this money is set aside for affordable housing and developing specific projects that relate to that. I'm supportive of the list that is identified here. I think sometimes when you don't have a list, you end up with a lot of different projects on a list, and you end up actually never completing anything. You have just too small amounts of money to submit to any particular project, and nothing really gets done. So, I like this. I think it allows us to move forward with some very specific projects and get things done as we know they're moving forward. There's great public input into this, so this is not something that was just developed by staff alone. And so, I do think it's good to have the list. Certainly, we can add things at later points, so I'm very supportive of the way that it's written here. My question that I have, through your worship to staff, is just around, just to remind us around the housing affordability and how this interacts with DCCs, particularly the increase that we're experiencing in DCCs, and how this policy will tie into that and connect in a way that doesn't allow or won't force housing prices to be increased in a significant way.
Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for the questions. The, one of the things that the industry advised staff of was the need for us to try and not encumber, if you will, the word, the usage, encumber the housing market with many fees at the same time. In other words, try and straddle the cost, the anticipated increase in charges going forward. So, we have the CACs, and sometime after, and not concurrent, have the DCC increases. The industry has always been supportive of, if I can put it that way, of whatever the appropriate costs are, based on an analysis of land values, of construction costs and labour and material costs, as long as the costs are incremental and not imposed at one time. So, with that in mind, the intent is for the DCC bylaw review to not come into effect for the next, at least six months. And at that point, staff endeavour to bring forward, for council's consideration, a DCC bylaw that's reflective of the current land values, because the current bylaw is actually a few years old now, and land values have, I think, in some cases, have tripled in terms of, in comparison with the land values that have gone into the DCC charges. As far as affordability is concerned, your worship, staff can advise that this particular policy does not, in fact, even though every increase will have an incremental impact, the fact remains that this, for the most part, is a minimal, can be considered a minimal increase, in terms of, I guess, single-family being $5,000. I think, based on my understanding of market these days, I think the price of a single-family home is around a $1.2 million range. So, $5,000 doesn't really equate in having a significant, I guess, impact on the price of a home.
So, just to follow up then, it is in here suggested a 12-month grace period for the introduction of this policy. And so, is that 12, that's 12 months from today? Or when would this 12 months start, this grace period, before the CACs would take effect?
Thank you again. The intent, your worship, is if council was to adopt the policy, that the policy will not come into full force and effect until 12 months from the date of adoption. In other words, July 23 of 2019 would be the date of effectiveness of the policy. And the applications that have already been completed or submitted and are considered to be in-stream will be exempt as long as they obtain their final reading of the, you know, corresponding zoning bylaws prior to July 23 of 2019.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Thank you. I'd like to thank staff for this report. It was really easy to understand and it was easy to follow along the process. I'd also really like to commend the staff for their work in this, on this report in terms of the engagement process. I know when this first came to the table, the development community was concerned about what this might look like and how it would unfold. And I think our staff did a really great job bringing them along in the process and making sure that everybody was heard and everybody understood. So, I think in the, in terms of our stakeholder engagement process here, I think staff really held up, held themselves to a high standard in this. So, I thank them for that. I think this also creates a policy where there's consistency and everybody sort of has a good understanding of the expectations and how they can move forward instead of, you know, sort of ad hoc or random contributions. We also have a policy now that supports true affordable housing initiatives through our DCC waivers. So, while I do have a concern about the impact this will have on housing prices with the increases that are coming in DCCs and translating taxes, and there's a whole bunch of things that just seem to be compounding to affect or impact affordability, I think we've taken really good steps to create policy aside from this that would take into consideration the need for some DCC waivers or whatever that could look like for us to support some true affordable housing, rather than, you know, like Mr. Seffy said, $5,000 on a single-family home. Without referring back to the policy, perhaps through you, Mayor Froze, to Mr. Seffy, could you confirm for me that the CACs will not be, are not part of our DCC waivers for affordable housing? It's not included in that bylaw, is it?
Mr. Seffy?
I'm sorry, I don't know if I understand the question, your worship. Is the question whether CACs, sorry, can I maybe ask Councillor Qualley to repeat that?
I'm sorry, I wasn't very clear. Our bylaw that allows for the waiver of DCCs for nonprofit housing, does it also allow for the waiver of CACs?
That, that's a separate process, your worship. That's a separate bylaw. The DCC regulations are fairly rigid. So, the statutory, sort of provincial statutory requirements are for a council, if a council wishes to waive DCCs, to actually have a bylaw and have a DCC waiver bylaw. As far as CACs are concerned, the CAC policy that council is considering this evening does, in fact, make reference to the same treatment, if you will, in that the CACs will not be applicable on affordable housing projects.
Thank you for clearing that up. But does that require us a separate motion, or is that encapsulated in the, this?
It is included.
Thank you for clearing that up. Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the comment that Councillor Long made with regards to affordable housing. And I think affordable housing includes reasonable tax rates, too. So, you can pay now or pay later and keep paying later and keep paying later. We got today on table a letter from the UDI, as well as the Greater Vancouver Home Builders Association, that says they are generally supportive of the proposals, and their industry has always supported the principle that growth should pay the fair share of the costs associated with growth. I echo that sentiment, and I think this is a move towards making that share fairer. So, I will support it.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Well, this assumes that there has been something going on over the last 20 or 30 years that people are not paying their share. I guess that's an assumption that's being made, first of all. And if you look back at some of the projects, or if council were, or anybody would look back at some of the projects that happened way back in the past, there were much, much higher contributions given to community amenities than this policy allows. If you look at Bedford Landing, for example, where the mayor actually lives, I mean, there's a whole food centre that we're now leasing out that was given to us as part of an amenity there. If they had stuck to this policy, I guess that wouldn't even be there today. So, here we are with the policy, and I won't be supporting it. But I think if we want to keep housing affordable, we don't want to restrict the amount of parking and the type of parking that we did at the last meeting. We eliminated the potential for certain parking requirements in housing. I'm sure that's not going to drop the price of a house. And today, we're, well, we've spent an awful lot of time and money and effort in trying to, trying to make something fixed that really wasn't broken before.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the question on F5. It carries with Councillor Long opposed. Move on to F6, Cedar Creek Estates, Manufactured Home Park. There's a motion there. Could I have a, moved by Councillor Fox, second by Councillor Whitmarsh. Councillor Arnison?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I do appreciate that this has been
I do appreciate that this has been put forward as a result of a rather challenging situation further to a new OCP and zoning. However, I'm not gonna be supporting, actually, just going back to what was originally proposed. I believe that, once we extinguish this attempt to change the zoning to a manufactured home park, we will not easily, if at all, be able to obtain similar lands for a manufactured home park in the area. And overall, our manufactured home park policy, which is included in the staff report, really underlines the importance of maintaining this zoning, or additionally, that any redevelopment of a manufactured home park assures that there is some affordability component in any new development. And I just wanted to share, I, I reached out to somebody who does actually, in the business world, provide affordable housing. And what, I'm just going to sort of generically say on what they're talking about for manufactured or mobile home parks, they're actually being looked at to be purchased in order to turn them into rental housing opportunities, because there's a critical supply of affordable, lack of affordable housing, and, but these opportunities, unfortunately, are in private ownership, and that is the problem that we have here. It's a lack of housing security and under increasing pressure. And the only way to decrease the pressure is to enforce existing zoning and to limit the use to mobile home parks and preserve this in any OCP. So I won't be supporting this.
Thank you. Counsel Fox.
Well, I will be supporting this, because I think this gives some security to some people. I realize that's not necessarily a perfect solution, but it's a solution to a situation which created a lot of anxiety and a lot of discomfort for its residents. And obviously, through the collaborative approach that was taken, the outcome is that, well, the motion that we have in front of us today, and although it's not perfect, I think that it's a, a more constructive approach than the anxiety-driven angst that was created by the other, the previous approach. So I, I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
I'll be supporting this motion as well. I think that it's clear that, now that the residents of that community have received the good information and are able to clarify in their own minds what's happening there, it's clear that approximately 90% support leaving the designation as it is. And I think we should continue to, to move in that direction, and I will certainly be supporting it.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, I see that the majority of residents are willing to, or sign that petition, but I also see that the property owner has also indicated a willingness to withdraw the rezoning application submitted in March 2018, which kind of put them all up with their backs a bit towards the wall, I think. Now, to staff, do we have any guarantees that the property owner will, in fact, withdraw his rezoning application if we drop out of this whole business of the bylaws?
Mr. Seffy.
Your worship, we have the commitment of the landowner to not pursue and withdraw the application. And I guess I will take this opportunity to just also, I guess, council is aware of it, but advise the public and remind council, perhaps, that property owners are, are able to present applications at any time. In other words, even if this was a requirement of the process going forward, the fact remains that a property owner can submit a new application at any time for, for reconsideration or consideration of council, which will then be subject to council's normal process of considering the application on its own merits. So, yeah, that's the, the comments that I would have.
Okay, well, I actually agree with Counselor Ernestson. I think that manufactured home parks and their residents deserve more protections.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley.
Thanks. When I first read this report, I thought maybe that was a typo, 90%. I didn't think we'd ever get to a place where we had that high of a consensus on any sort of proposal coming from that area. And I'm really glad that we've spent the time with some assistance from some outside consulting to figure this out and get to a place where the residents have some, some security in their home. And at one point, several months ago, we had a couple hundred seniors in our community who had very little home security. And I think now, with this change, we have 90% of them that feel like they have some security in the, in their, in their home situation. So I'm definitely gonna be supporting this, and I want to thank the staff and our consultants and, and the landowner for, for persevering to get to this result.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, just, just a final comment is that there is significant protections for these people. Both we have a township policy around protection for people in mobile home parks, and the provincial government has introduced more stringent protection for those in mobile home parks. And so there are significant protections, and, and the concern about the value of property. In fact, three of those homes in there have sold in the last number of months, certainly indicating that all of the, the misinformation that was spread certainly has had no effect on the ability to sell homes in that, in that park. So I think now that people have the clear information, it's, it's, it's quite, it's, that 90% of the people are very happy with the situation they're in. So I think absolutely we should be supporting this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F6. Carries with Counsel Richter, Counsel Ernestson, Counsel Davis opposed. Move on to correspondence. There's one item of correspondence, give a motion for receipt. Counsel Qualley, seconded by Counsel Fox, discussion on that. Counsel Ernestson.
Yes, I know that we don't do proclamations, but I'm hoping that we might correspond with the United Way. I know they have a flag, and perhaps they'd like to fly it high on September 20th. Thank you.
I don't know if they've requested that. They haven't requested it, so.
Oh, well, I know they haven't requested it, but in lieu of a proclamation, maybe they'd be interested in doing that instead. That was my only thought.
Thank you. All right, I thought I'd call a question.
Have receipt.
Have receipt. Carries unanimously. And Minister of Committees, there's Agriculture Advisory and Economic Enhancement Committee of June 27th. Give a motion, please. Counsel Davis, seconder. Counsel Fox, discussion on receipt. Seeing none, call a question on H1. Carries unanimously. Move on to H2, and there's a recommended motion from the AAEEC, and that is regarding reducing particulate matter emissions, that we've been, that we, sorry, the Metro Vancouver be invited to provide the reducing particulate matter emissions presentation to council. And that council direct staff to work with Metro Vancouver to help create a communication strategy that educates and informs residents in rural agriculture areas about alternatives to open burning and solutions and best practices. And that council direct staff to review open burning windows and timeframes, and that council direct staff to work with Metro Vancouver to explore other solutions. Why didn't I just say the recommendation? Alternatives to open burning and help facilitate their end goal of improving air quality in the region. Do I have a motion, please? Counsel Davis, second. Counsel Richter, I guess I hadn't talked much today. I had to, you know, get out there. Counsel Ernestson.
Yes, thank you, worship. I just want to say I really endorse this. I know that Metro is really going above and beyond. They're taking their mandate to a new level. Overall, air quality is certainly a concern. We all share the air shed, and I know that because we have so much agricultural land, not just that, but our burning practices and best management, I think we need an educational component to help people to recognize that there are some that are very severely impacted by particulate matter in the air, and especially under inversion situations. We need to be really cognizant of that and try and figure out ways that we can reduce the negative air quality and health impacts while we're doing this.
Thank you. So that I'll call a question on H2. Carries with Counsel Long opposed. Move to H3, and this is a motion to invite KPU for a report. Can I have motion? Counsel Ernestson, seconder. On each, Counsel Richter, discussion on H3. Looks pretty straightforward. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, they're very close to finalizing their, their report, and the committee felt that it would be appropriate for them to take it directly to council. It's very informative and certainly will fill in a lot of knowledge gaps for us in terms of what we should be doing for food production as we move forward into the next decades.
Thank you. I'll call a question on H3. Carries unanimously. And Counsel Richter, your mic goes on. You have a...
Yes, so I'm just moving the motion, which is essentially that we refer the matter of under eve potlights to staff for report and recommendations on how to, how the excessive use of these potlights can be regulated as part of the building permits process. I still move.
Okay, is there a seconder? Counsel Ernestson, seconds. Discussion on I-1. Counsel Ernestson.
Yes, thank you, worship. I know we've received some correspondence, as well as this notice of motion. And as a result, I started to look into the situation, and I think that there are a number of communities that have started to create policies around this, and generally they're called dark sky policies. So the protocols that we have in place currently are limited, but they generally reflect our strategy to reduce the nuisance light spillover to neighboring properties. So I think that the challenge is that when we have, you know, potentially properties that are developed, and I know LED lighting is a huge benefit from a, a cost-saving and an energy efficiency point of view, but apparently, once they were initiated and there was a broad uptake, it brought more and more of these issues to the fore, because more people were using them and brightening up our environment, apparently. So I, I support this, going back to staff for review, to see what it is that we could do to sort of tie it in with our general requirements, so that light pollution is not troubling to the neighboring properties.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
And I had a discussion with a developer this past weekend about why these are becoming more prevalent. I had thought initially that maybe it had to do with security, home security. And the answer that I got was a little bit surprising. It's a trend, and the whole purpose of them is to show off the lines of your house. So maybe that's a trend that we don't need to have in this community, but I would like to hear what staff have to say about the matter.
Thank you. Well, this doesn't apply to Christmas lights, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call a question on I-1. And the motion carries. Counsel Fox, Mayor Froze, Counsel Qualley, Counsel Sparrow opposed. And is there any other business?
Termination.
Moved by Counsel Fox, seconded by Counsel Davis. Motion to terminate. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you.